I'm going to go ahead and call us in to order and declare that we have a quorum of seven members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Members of the board, we'll begin this meeting like we do all of our meetings with our pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and our moment of silence. To lead us this evening, we have students from South Knoll Elementary and from Forest Ridge Elementary, and to introduce their students to you, we have the principals from those fine schools, Laura Richter from South Knoll and Teresa Cott from Forest Ridge. Let me lower it to your height, Teresa.
I need that.
You do, because we're being recorded.
Okay. Just to give you some space. Well, I guess I need a lot of direction. The day started very early and ended with dogs with dads. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. So I have two fabulous Falcons from Forest Ridge Elementary. So first, we have Natalie Weaver. She is a kindergartner at Forest Ridge. Natalie is an avid reader, loves to read, especially books about cats. So we have that in common. She has a cat named Sprinkles that might have something to do with that. She also is very witty and has a very good sense of humor, so really probably on the lines of about a fifth grader. And she definitely, definitely is an entrepreneur. She is really looking at Lemonade Day and what she wants to do to serve our community. So we are so glad that Natalie is here this evening. Also with me from Forest Ridge is Sam McGarry. Sam is a fourth grader at Forest Ridge. He is a leader in our FLIP leadership team, so Falcon leaders inspire people. Sam is one of the greatest leaders of the work we do in the time of day called Genus Hour with projects. So thanks to Sam, we have a fountain in our -- I didn't think I told you that, but we have a fountain.
Thanks, Sam.
Fountain in our courtyard that he had a crew to build. He's definitely an entrepreneur also, and he might ask you for a 3D printer before we leave because he has a 3D pen that he made these beautiful earrings with that pen, and he sells them for $3 a pair, and they have a lifetime warranty. So you can't beat that. So two wonderful leaders from Forest Ridge here to help us with the pledges. Ms. Richter.
Sure. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you these two fine gentlemen here. This is Cade Lacy and his brother Jude. These brothers are just fabulous examples of what it means to be a South Knoll superkid. I asked each of them what they really loved about school and what their favorite things to do are, and Cade told me that he enjoys -- and I've been practicing all afternoon, so I get it right, but chances are, you're going to have to help me, okay? You like writing ginger men warrior stories. Did I do it? Okay. So he likes writing ginger men warrior stories, and of course, his favorite subject in school is writing. And his brother Jude loves reading, and he enjoys the classics. When you ask Jude what his favorite books are, he will tell you that they are Captain Underpants and Calvin and Hobbes. So an avid reader, yes. And I asked Jude what his favorite subjects were. His brother immediately helped with "You Can't Say Recession." "You Cannot Say Recession," which Jude replied, "Yeah, because that's everybody's favorite." But he said, told me that stations are his favorite part of the day. And so I asked him if he preferred reading or math better, and he told me he really enjoys social stations. So he gets the most out of his time at school, both academically and just having fun and learning how to be a great member of a class in our school community. So I'm very proud to have these guys here with us today.
(applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Lord, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in salute to the Texas flag. Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Hey, take your picture. Come on.
I don't get it. I'd like to recognize the artwork around the room. Elementary, and Pecan Trail Intermediate School students. So please take some time to look at that. It's always impressive. The consent agenda is next. That's items E2, G, I1, J1, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, J9, and J10. Does anybody wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
J2, please.
Anybody else? If not, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve all consent agenda items, I guess other than J2.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries 7-0 for all items on the consent agenda, noting that J2 has been removed. Okay. Next is board directions and reports. Does anybody have any reports on activities that have been attended or of which you've been a part?
I have a couple of things for the Education Foundation that Teresa Bynum so kindly printed for me to read. The Education Foundation dedicated its new donor wall in the foyer of this room in March with a donor reception honoring 61 individuals and businesses who donated a total of $206,000 through its inaugural partnering opportunities program. Also, Education Foundation will be hosting its 18th Senior Hall of Fame honoring 60 graduating seniors on Tuesday, May 1st, at the College Station Hilton and Conference Center. Students are selected by their teachers based on leadership, integrity, positive attitude, and school pride. And I think you can still sign up to go to that, right? I'll be there, by the way. And that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Intergovernmental Relations. The meeting, the last meeting, we had, I can't remember his name, but we had someone present some ideas for University Drive and also Welborn and George Bush. And it appears, I mean, all of the presentations that have gone on in that committee have been about increasing the walkability and bikeability in Bryan College Station, and they look like some really cool ideas. They asked for out-of-the-box. I don't know if anybody else has ever seen those. They don't know when those will happen or if they will happen, but they are looking at some different things, and I love the direction that they're headed.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Dr. Ely, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I just want to talk about some upcoming events. We've had the opportunity to be together a number of times, and we've got another, a number of other opportunities available to us here in the future. On Thursday, day after tomorrow, April 19th, our next boundary adjustment workshop will be held at 3:00 p.m. in this room here in the boardroom. So that's Thursday, the 19th, at 3:00. We've scheduled a boundary adjustment workshop after that. We'll post it here shortly, and that is scheduled for Monday, April 23rd, also at 3:00 here in the boardroom. So that's what we have scheduled for boundary adjustment workshops. One more on the 19th and the 23rd. If we need more, then we'll talk about dates that will work past Monday, the 23rd. As Mr. Williams pointed out, yes, we do have the Hall of Fame banquet is going to be held Tuesday, May 1st, at 6:30 p.m. in the Hilton. And then we have a little bit of a break until the week of May the 14th, and then we're together three times. We have the regular board meetings, which are scheduled for May the 15th, that Tuesday. Wednesday is the Education Foundation Scholarship Night, and so that would be Wednesday, May the 16th. And then Thursday, May 17th, is our annual employee awards, where we recognize all of our employees who are retiring and those with service awards and our Employee of the Year, Classified, Auxiliary, Paraprofessional, and Teacher of the Year. And so that will be on Thursday, May the 17th. I don't have the time yet in front of me, but it'll be at Grace Bible Church, Southwood Campus, right across New Oasis from A&amp;M Consolidated High School, as it has been in the past. So please get those on your calendar, especially the May 15th, 16th, and 17th. Okay? Thank you.
Carrie, do we have the thing to read for? For?
For public comment.
Public comment?
That's still the one we have, the one for public comment.
Okay. We'll be good. Okay, so now we'll move on to hearing of citizens, and time will be limited to three minutes, and Mrs. Horn will be keeping time over there, and please, no derogatory comments. Our first speaker, what?
Say your name and your address.
Oh, yeah. Please state your name and address at the start, too. First is Phoebe Cash.
Do I pass my answer?
Sure, absolutely.
Hello, everyone. How are you all doing? My name is Phoebe Cash, and my address is 1725 Harvey Mitchell Parkway South, Apartment 5221. I am representing my interest group, PASS, which stands for Preparation and Advocacy for Student Success. We are an interest group from Bryan College Station area, and our goal for public education is to equip young adults with the necessary skills for them to succeed both in their college and professional careers. Now, myself and my other group members who are here are currently experiencing the exciting adventure called "Life After High School Graduation." It is an exciting time of life, living independently, making your own schedule, eating out way too much. It's exciting, it's challenging, and it can even be frightening, especially if you have not been prepared for basic adulthood. Even though we live in a time of technology and innovation with iPhones where we have information readily available, there is no amount of apps or Google searching that can prepare students for life effectively. This must happen in the classroom, and that is our mission. We are advocating for the implementation of life preparatory classes across all public high schools in Texas, but more than that, we want to integrate them into graduation requirements, whether that be the minimum, the recommended, or the distinguished high school programs as outlined in Chapter 74 of Texas. I'd like to share a couple rather daunting statistics regarding life after graduation. Currently, in the U.S., 56% of college students who started at a four-year university end up dropping out by year six of their college career. Another really scary number, especially for parents here, is that more than a quarter of 20- to 34-year-olds in the U.S. are still living at home. Finally, and most importantly, the Texas public school system does not mandate any life preparatory classes, period. This is what we want to fix. But Texas has the raw materials to make this happen. In Chapters 127 and 130 of Texas, they already outline both career development and career and technical education. The only issue is neither of these programs are required, and so none of their classes are required. They are all recommended, or they fall under electives, which is a pick-and choose category by nature. By leaving life preparatory classes to electives, we are disengaging from a proactive educational system. What PASS would like to see is a graduated high school degree plan that implements the most fundamental life preparatory classes, starting in ninth until 12th. A few of these potential courses would include personal finance, career preparation, college readiness, psychology, home economics, leadership. Most of these courses already exist. We just want to take them out of a pick-and-choose situation by integrating them into high school graduation requirements. Now, there are two primary means to achieve this. One is through the redistribution of public school funding. Are we effectively and efficiently using our money in Texas public school districts? The second consideration is, do we have too many electives? Kind of goes along with the first one. Are we funding electives that are gratuitous? Can we swap some of these required elective credits and replace them with life preparatory classes that we are now mandating? There's a ton of feasible reorganization that could open up so much opportunity for student success. I'd like to close with one final thought, one final question that is paramount to this discussion. We have to ask ourselves, what is the goal for public education? Can I continue my thought? Is that okay?
Yeah. You didn't finish your sentence.
I was just going to say, at PASS, we believe that education is an investment in lives of students to prepare them for personal success and to enable them to become contributing members of society. If you guys want to follow us, there are testimonies up here that have our social media. We actually spoke to the State Board of Education in Austin on April 11th, and we're going to the state legislature in January, so please support us in this mission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Cameron Boswell.
My name is Cameron Boswell. I live at 17367 Sioux Springs Drive. I'm an eighth grader at CSHMS. I'm involved in many activities at school, including student council, NJHS, cross-country, and track. A few weeks ago, my parents held a family meeting to tell me and my brother what was happening with the rezoning, and specifically that the current plan could likely affect me as an incoming freshman. I didn't believe them. I couldn't imagine that anyone would consider having me or any of my classmates change high schools at this point. My first comment to them when they told me about the rezoning plan was, "I already registered for classes at CSHS. I then remembered that some of my friends have made cheer at CSHS. Another friend was about to try out to become a strutter. She has now made the team." I then thought about cross-country and track. I've already met with the coaches, and one came and watched us run. I just couldn't believe that somehow things would not be as planned. My parents tried to explain that spots would likely be held for kids on cheer, drill, student council, et cetera, and maybe coaches at CONSOL will get a chance to meet student athletes this summer. But I know, just as my parents know, that any student would be at a disadvantage if switched schools at this point. You can't just hold a spot and expect the student to simply slide right in. Today, I went to sign up for student council for CSHS, and there was a sign posted that said student council elections are postponed until high school starts. I don't know for sure, but it seems to me that they want us to switch to our new schools before any other plans are made, but plans have been made. I've discussed my classes and our four-year plans with my friends. We have made plans together as a group of future freshmen at CSHS, and I'm sure the students at CONSOL have already made their plans, too. And what hit me today was seeing that student council flyer. I know that I can't possibly be elected to student council at a school where I know maybe 30 to 40 kids that also end up getting rezoned. As students, we have gone through this stress for the past several weeks. My parents have said that it will all work out, but it seems like each week, a different friend realizes or is told by parents that he or she may be rezoned and not attending high school with other classmates. The hardest thing about all this is I don't know what to even hope for at this point, for me not to be affected by the rezoning or for it to actually affect me so that my friends can stay together. My best friend Livy lives in Creek Meadows. My other friend Emma lives in Castle Gate, too. One of our other friends Haley lives right near CSHS, and several others live in Saddle Creek. And then there are many others that I'm excited to play sports with, take classes with, and simply hang out with and be there for one another. Our hearts are breaking. Please do not pull us apart at this point in our lives. Please consider grandfathering the incoming freshman. Thank you.
My name is Connor Scott. My address is 17360 Palodoro Cannon. I am not, I'm an eighth grader at College Station Middle School. I'm speaking tonight not only for myself, but for all of the eighth graders that may be rezoned. I ask that you please consider grandfathering all of us that will be sophomores when the new zones take effect. I'm ready, I'm really excited about starting high school. I've registered for my classes and already think about how much fun my friends, teammates, and I will have in the coming years. The thought of possibly starting at a new high school with only a few of my friends is scary. I would imagine the eighth graders that will be rezoned from AMC MS probably feel the same way. I've spent every summer since I can remember at CSHS sports camps, so College Station High School is what is familiar to me. I tried to go to CONSOL baseball camp one year, but wasn't allowed to because you could only register for camps at the high school you rezoned for. I have actually never even walked inside A&amp;M Consolidated High School. I've only participated in the track meet there. If I am one of the ones rezoned, I'll have about a month to decide what is best for me, either move schools as a sophomore or re-enroll as a freshman and start high school at a place that is foreign to me. That is a huge decision for an eighth grader to make. Being separated from friends is even worse than changing schools. Whoever is rezoned will miss their friends, and whoever isn't rezoned will miss their friends that were. Please think about grandfathering any of the eighth graders that are rezoned. Our friends are a major part of our world, and starting high school is scary enough. The effects grandfathering might have on capacity numbers is small, but the effect it will have for us eighth graders would be huge. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate your consideration, and I know that you will make the best choice for all students impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nate Sharp.
My name is Nate Sharp. My address is 17312 McCowee Court. I've spoken to the board once before, so I appreciate the chance to do it again. I am the father of four children who attend CSISD schools. Next fall, or sorry, this coming fall and the following fall, my kids will be on four different CSISD campuses. I am married to the world's greatest PTO president. No offense to Miss Nolan, a past PTO president, and I'm best known in our community as the person who has stood in front of Forest Ridge Elementary every Wednesday for the last seven years as a crossing guard, rain or shine. And by the way, if you want to predict the bad weather during the school year, it's always on Wednesdays. My family has been very uniquely committed to and devoted to CSISD for the 11 years that we've lived in this community, but honestly, we are at the end of our rope and fed up with the constant rezoning. What we hear on the news is that you rezone frequently because you're constantly building new schools, and there is some truth to that, but the high school rezoning that we're going through right now has nothing to do with a new school being built. You had the chance to rezone when CSHS was built, and you messed up that. Then you tried again two years ago and messed up again, and so now we're all going through this one more time. I hope you think about the cloud of uncertainty that hangs over this community from year to year because people don't know what's going to happen from a rezoning standpoint. No one knows where to buy houses, no one knows whether they need to move or not. The whole cloud of uncertainty is frustrating, and it's driven by your policy, FC local. Sometimes it feels like you talk about FC local like it fell out of the sky, but it's your policy that you created and you're making decisions based on, and that's at the heart of the problem. I want to speak on behalf of grandfathering the eighth graders. I can't do that as well as the two eighth graders who were just up here, but I'm the father of an eighth grader. Most of the parents I know who are concerned about rezoning are very concerned about grandfathering current eighth graders who will be freshmen this fall. I ask the board, please, to grandfather those eighth graders. They, as has been well said tonight, they're committed to their schools. They've been planning on this for a long time. They're already registered. I also want to say that the idea that the southernmost communities in the school district would be zoned for the northernmost schools in the district is absurd to anyone, I think, in the room, except for the seven of you, maybe. So I hope you'll think carefully about what a burden that is on the families who live in the south to have to drive even further to the northern schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Takes us to H1, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to the 2018-19 district improvement plan. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Members of the board, so obviously, the major work that goes on in College Station ISD in any school district is the educational improvement of our campuses, and I'm vamping here to make sure we've got this turned on. Okay, there we go. Thank you. So part of what we do in our planning process is go through a district improvement planning process. And Dr. Penny Trammell, our chief academic officer, has led our district-wide Educational Improvement Council in this process. She'll talk a little bit about our current plan and what we've done to monitor our current plan and the development of our plan for next year, and then this is an action item for you this evening. So we would move approval, would hope for approval of the 2018-19 district improvement plan at the end of this presentation. Dr. Trammell.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank Ms. Barrett and Dr. Wesson for serving on the District Education Improvement Council this year and for contributing to our work. Throughout this year, the DEIC has monitored our current improvement plan and heard, pardon me, and heard reports from different departments on their progress toward achieving the goals on the plan. At the same time, we have had recommendations from different departments and coordinators based on data that is noted in the new plan and that was in the executive summary of the previous plan to help us formulate goals for the 2018-19 plan. As we looked at the 2017, or 2016-17 plan, we considered things that we might need to carry forward into the 2018 plan. We considered things that we might need to abandon based on new data, and we considered things that we had accomplished and where we, the next steps for those things. As we wrote the new district improvement plan, we garnered input from, like I said, the DEIC, which consists of teachers, community members, paraprofessionals, business members, a variety of people. We also asked for input from our campus administrators. We looked carefully at the district data noted on, excuse me, noted on page seven in the new district plan. We looked at the presentations and the recommendations from the coordinators and the different departments based on their data for improvement for the 2018 school year and came up with this plan. The goals are tightly aligned to the board's five commitments and goals, and the objectives stem from those five goals. So we have three objectives for goal one, to help us work to improve in that area, three for goal two, three for goal three, one for goal four, and one for goal five. I would like to thank you for reading this plan. We included it in the transmittal so that you would have an opportunity to look over it and make sure it's aligned with what you feel is important for the district for improvement for the 2018 school year. You'll notice we reviewed and mentioned earlier in the year that we were going to consider changing the consider changing the template for the plan. DEIC did approve this template, and as you noticed when you read it, it looks a little bit different. The executive summary is not a narrative. We organized that so that it would be very easy to read in categories. We included a summary of our strengths, a summary of our needs, and the priorities we would have for the 2018 school year. So hopefully, it's easy for our parents and community as well as you all to read and see the direction that we feel we need to go. The actual plan itself has goals and objectives, and then it has action steps. The action steps are in the left column, and they are bolded. We have different steps for the different objectives. One thing I forgot to mention, we included a glossary on the first page with vocabulary we felt would be helpful to you all and the public. You might see words such as "cultural capital" in the plan, and maybe you've heard of that, maybe not, but in particular, on this particular objective, we are going to provide training for our educators on cultural capital, which we call in our definition page culturally responsive teaching. And all that is, is just recognizing that kids come to us with different knowledge, attitude, values, language, taste, and abilities based on the culture that they grow up in. So as educators, we want to be mindful of that as we plan the curriculum and deliver instruction in the classroom. So, we have action steps for every objective to improve. We have the people that are responsible for those steps. We have the resources we feel we will need to accomplish those steps. We have timelines within which we will try to get those steps done. We have the student populations we feel it will most impact, and we have our evidence of success. Another thing that will be a little bit different this year is the district will monitor the plan intentionally three times a year. So we will review the plan in October, February, and May to note progress on what we have accomplished, accomplished thus far. We will use the key that you see at the bottom to note where we are at that point in time. Campuses will use the same template so that as they meet with their site-based decision-making teams, they too will monitor their progress on their plans and evaluate formatively as they go along. At the end of the year, we have what we call the summative evaluation to be filled out by campus administrators, district administrators for the district improvement plan, and we will write based on evidence how we did on that particular goal and objective. We've also noted funding because the law requires us to note federal funds used and state comp ed funds used, so you'll notice that. If something is blank, we feel like it doesn't require funding, or we will use local funds for that. So, I just want to brag on the District Education Improvement Council. They worked really, really hard. Hopefully, they feel like they had a voice and that this is truly their plan, and the teachers feel like they've had a say on what we are going to work on with our kids this coming year. So with that, I would like to ask you, make a recommendation to approve the 2018-19 district improvement plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that. Any questions?
I do. But first, I just want to say that I was very impressed with this whenever I was reading through it. I mean, I can tell that many, many hours went into this, and I think it is incredibly thorough and the depth of what you have done. I mean, I was blown away. I think that you've done a great job.
Well, thank you.
That the committee has done a great job.
The committee, yes.
The committee has done a fantastic job with this. I only have one question. So, I was looking under the objectives, not the objectives, the, one of the very first, the areas examined. Under the demographics, the summary of strengths talks about the percentage, how our percentage of, is that where it says the 25%? We've grown 25% in special education?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we have.
I'm trying to find it. But then, on priorities, it says something about request additional custodial and maintenance personnel, but there's nothing in there about, about requesting more staff.
That's a great point. That actually came from John Hall, who is over our facilities, and he included data in his report to the DEIC, and that could be an oversight. We could put that, I guess, we could put that under demographics. I see where you're saying. Yes. We're happy to put that data that was used for that under demographics.
Yeah, because I mean, I did see that there was, addressing the special education population, that there was a place further down under objectives and that talked about training for everyone.
Right.
So I did see that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's new.
We find a need to, because we have an increasing special ed population, we do think we need to educate our staff on accommodations and that we might just make in, in the classroom for all kids. We feel that culturally responsive teaching, when I talked about cultural capital, will be helpful in that because that will address maybe some of the differences in how kids learn and involve more strategies in the actual instruction in the classroom and diverse ways teachers have kids process information. So we're hoping that that will help all kids, but that would be a, something that we feel like might help our special ed population as well.
Again, like I said, I, I think it's great.
Thank you.
I can tell that you guys, that the committee put a ton of work into this.
They did. They worked really hard and stayed beyond their time several days. So I'm just saying. So, it's a great team.
Anyone else?
I do. Yes, the team did stay, long hours.
And thank you for staying with us, Ms. Barrett.
Most, most of the time. But what I wanted to say is a couple of things is, I, I really did see the community involvement in this piece, and the community really had a say in some of the things that they think about. One of the things that we've talked about, and I want to bring everyone's attention to, is we've, they're gotten here to do a district curriculum alignment for fine arts. I think we've had a lot of email over the past year or so about fine arts, and they're going to do a, try to work on a district curriculum alignment for all the schools that would look good, be the same across the district, which I think is important to a lot of people. Also, where regards to safety, there's a huge component in here about social emotional needs. The community, again, weighed in heavily on this, talking about bullying, a variety of things using their cell phones, the different ways that kids can, you know, need some help emotionally. And they have a, a big point in here of trying to help the teachers and also make, have curriculum and instruction leadership for that. Also, there's a big component about addressing the gaps in the underperforming populations. Again, the teachers and, and the cabinet and just the administration all weighed in on this. I think this is such a comprehensive plan, as you put, Ms. Nolan, but it also included a comprehensive group of people that really did have a say as we walked around the room and, and notes were taken. And I really appreciate the district trying to, I, I really don't know how you got it to this point because there was so much information up on the walls all around this room and people putting sticky. I think we probably went through about 200, probably more than that, probably 500 stickies. And, and they would bring the, and, and go through that information, and then we'd be at it again. So, good job on leading that. Also, good job to all those that were included, which I think is the voice of the community and the teachers and the staff and the, and the administrators.
Thank you.
I just have one more thing to say.
Yes.
I mean, I've already, you know, we get a lot of calls, questions, emails from community members, and I've actually already sent this out to a handful of parents saying that have called me over the last couple of months, voicing concerns, and I've said, "You need to read this." I was like, "It's being, it's being addressed. Read this." So, I've already been sending it out.
Yay.
Good.
Great, thank you. And I would like to echo those comments and thank you very much for that. And then also, anybody in the committee or that was on the committee that's here tonight, thank you very much, including you, Mrs. Barrett, who spent a fair amount of time in there, I know.
Dr. Wesson.
You get to help, you get to thank Mr. Wesson.
Dr. Wesson, thank you too. Appreciate it. Okay.
I mean, I, I guess I would add, incredible amount of work. It's a lot of people coming together and to pull it together the way, I think it was, you know, just an amazing amount of depth in a lot of things. So, I would be honored to move that we approve the 2018-2019 district improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and the district improvement plan will be on the website? Yeah?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, so if anybody wants to take a look at it and see what we're talking about, it will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trammell.
Thank you very much. Item H2, receive report related to school health advisory council. Dr. Ely.
Mr. President, members of the board, College Station ISD has a school health advisory council, as, as all school districts do in the state of Texas. It's a group of, of citizens who come together to talk about health and talk about the various aspects of that and keeping students healthy, whether it be through the food they eat, the programs we provide, the physical education opportunities that we give to students. And so we're very blessed in this community to have so many community members who are interested in the health of our 13,650 kids. And we have three representatives here today to give our annual report. We do, by statute, have to give an annual report, and we give that usually in April of each year. So we're pleased to give the annual report again. So, I'd like to, to, to recognize Alyssa Locklear, Beth, Dr. Beth McNeil, and Alicia Larkin, Dr. Larkin as well, who will be here to present the SHAC annual report to the board. So, who's going first?
I think that's me.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. Thank you again for having us and for the introduction. This College Station School Health Advisory Council is, as was stated, is mandated by the state, and our group meets again to discuss the health and wellness of College Station ISD students. And last year, in our annual report, we mentioned that we evaluated the district wellness policy. And the four priority areas that came out of this wellness policy were the safety of students, physical activity, curriculum, and mental health. Mental health gave us the framework for all three of our main focus areas this year, and those focus areas include recess, health curriculum, and electronic device use. So we'll discuss recess first. First, I'll cover what is recess. I was happy to hear from one young man earlier that it is his favorite class, but really, recess is unstructured play that is separate from, but a complement to PE classes. The Texas Education Code requires that children ages pre-K through fifth grade receive 30 minutes of physical activity a day in PE or daily recess. And our district does this. Recession is part of school children's schedule in elementary school. Our concern, however, is that sometimes this recess is removed or denied because of students' behavior, and it's a punishment to have the recess taken away. And this is a concern because we know that children need to move. They need the opportunity to move during the day in addition to their PE class. Research tells us that there is increased attentiveness, there is academic benefit to having daily recess. Children come back from recess more focused, their memory improves, their recall of information is better. We also see social and emotional benefits of recess. Recession gives them the time to work on problem-solving skills, teamwork, cooperation, and these skills translate into the classroom, helping them be better learners. And it also gives them a chance to learn how to regulate their own behavior, which can help with some of the disruptions that are seen in the classrooms. And then finally, the physical benefits of recess are, again, that opportunity to move, to expend energy. The overall recommendation for physical activity is 60 minutes a day. Recession provides a part of that, and it also gives them a chance to participate in an activity of their choosing, which helps them become lifelong participants in physical activity. And so this leads us to our first request. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the Centers for Disease Control recommend not only daily recess for students, but also the, that districts prohibit the removal of that recess for, for a punishment. And so, we ask that College Station ISD do just this. We ask that a policy is implemented that prohibits the removal or restriction of recess as a punishment for elementary students, and we ask that this is applied consistently across all campuses in our district. And the next thing we'll discuss is our health curriculum.
Good evening. I'm Beth McNeil, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I am here to kind of present and talk with you about the health education curriculum that's currently being used in our schools. We are, textbooks are currently 17 years old, and we are up for readoption. And so out of this discussion in the SHAC committee, we threw out ideas about how do we bring the most up-to-date, current content and data to our students that's medically accurate and current in their, in their respect. And a lot of ideas went back and forth about, do we actually really need textbooks? Can we be more current? And as an outcrop of this discussion and being relevant, we began to look at what are the characteristics of effective health education curriculum? What would need to happen in health education for our students to really be empowered to make good, healthy decisions and avoid risk behaviors? And so, some research was done, and we identified through, there are certain characteristics that have been demonstrated in the literature to be more effective at resulting in helping youth to make healthy choices and, and develop healthy behaviors for the future. And these characteristics can be summarized by these four main points, and that good health education curriculum that is effective, shown to be evidence-based effective, will function on functional knowledge, not just giving them factual information, statistics out of a book, but actually allows that student to take that information and apply it to their own personal lives and environment, and it's, it's knowledge that they, they can use. Instead of knowing about the different nutrients in food, how do I build a healthy plate and how do I actually implement that and put that? So, with a functional, functional knowledge. Also, curriculums that allow students to explore their own perceptions, their own values, their own culture, their ideas, and the perceptions of their peer group also make foundationally a more effective curriculum. But probably the most influential piece for making effective health education curriculum is curriculum that builds on skills, where students learn to use communication skills, decision-making skills, refusal skills, so that they can negotiate those situations where they might be putting themselves at risk. And so out of this, the SHAC committee, one of the decisions was to look at, could we generate a curriculum that can meet these characteristics of the effective characteristics of healthy education for health education? And out of it, a group of students from Texas A&amp;M University have put together a sample curriculum directed towards mental health currently to be used as a pilot to try to implement and see if we can get current curriculum available for the teachers. What's positive about using this approach is that the design would be to create a repository of lessons that could be used consistently across the disciplines so that we would have, like what you were mentioning earlier with the fine arts alignment, but we'd have alignment in the health education curriculum. And this curriculum would be housed kind of like the 24/7 success system where things, the materials would be there available for the teachers to access so that they could go and get the curriculum as opposed to buying a set of classroom textbooks that will be outdated five years after we purchase them. So, the committee would like to recommend that we begin a revision of the current health education curriculum so that we can bring us up to speed and be in alignment, in alignment with the characteristics of effective health education curriculum with a pilot of the mental health unit in the up and coming year. If successful, the mindset would be to continue creating more units that would eventually cover the whole, entire scope and sequence of the health education curriculum. and sequence of the health education curriculum.
Okay. All right. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As it's been said tonight, and as you know over the last several years, the SHAC has been focusing on the mental health of the students in our district. This year, we began to look, as many across the nation are doing it as well, at why we are in such a place of mental health crisis. Well, certainly, this is multifactorial. Recent data is suggesting that the use of smartphones and other electronic devices are contributing to the decline in mental health of our youth today. So armed with that preliminary knowledge, we did some research on several fronts, including trends in depression, anxiety, and suicide-related outcomes for teens related specifically to the extent of their smartphone use, as well as the effect of early pornography viewing on the developing brain. In addition, we sought feedback from parents and students on what is actually going on in their children's lives in this district. So quickly with the research, it's all included in greater detail in that background information that was sent to you guys. So I'm just going to hit the high points. The most recent and relevant study looking at mental health with smartphone use is actually pretty startling. With three hours of daily use, 34% of teens are reporting at least one suicide-related outcome, which means major depression, or cutting, or suicidal ideation. This percentage jumps to 48% with five hours of daily use, which may sound like a completely unreasonable amount of time. But as we learned in our background research, it's actually lower than what teens report as their average time spent online per day, approximately six hours for 8- to 12-year-olds and nine hours for 13- to 18-year-olds. The effects of early pornography viewing are harder to quantify on a short-term basis. There's not as much data published yet. We do know that exposure to pornography is more common than deliberate access. However, exposure serves as a gateway, obviously, to further pornographic image seeking. We also know that early viewing of pornography is linked to increased risky behaviors, and it directly affects young people's sexual beliefs. So in addition to that, in this district, we started hearing feedback from several parents. They were willing for us to share their stories anonymously in this forum. Actually, they wanted us to share their stories in this forum. All of the cases were taken already to administrators at their campuses and dealt with at their respective schools. We heard from the one girl who was repeatedly exposed to pornography by classmates during free-device time, a boy who was videoed against his will during class with the threat of posting this video to social media. There was another boy who was exposed to pornography at school using the district Wi-Fi and, as a result, began seeking out more opportunities to view pornography, which is basically early addiction behavior. There was another boy who was repeatedly exposed to pornography on other children's devices during summer enrichment. And most recently, we're starting to hear from even younger kids, those in elementary school, who are being exposed to violent games and violent movie characters on devices on our campuses. In all but one of those cases, the children involved did not even have their own device. The exposures occurred on their classmates' devices. We also began hearing about differences in interpretation and implementation of the acceptable use in electronic device policies at campuses across the district, ranging from no-device rules to free-range device use at corresponding grade-level campuses. We heard from teachers and administrators that recognized the problems occurring in our schools at this time due to electronic use with our students. So in light of all the research, the SHAC created a subcommittee to make recommendations to present to the full SHAC for approval before coming before you today. So the recommendations we're going to outline now are the product of that subcommittee and have been approved by the full SHAC committee. So first and foremost, basically, the SHAC recommends revised acceptable use and electronic device use policies for the district. To that end, we have five strategies that we would recommend implementing to strengthen the current policies and further protect the students of our district. And here they are. So strategy number one would be to limit all electronic device use to strictly educational purposes in at least grades K through 8. This would eliminate and prohibit free-device time, as well as device time at lunch, recess, homeroom, and passing periods, thus decreasing our students' overall time spent on electronic devices and decreasing the opportunities for inappropriate use while on our campuses. Moving on to strategy two, the SHAC recommends that these revised policies be consistently implemented across corresponding grade-level campuses with clear and consistent consequences for failure to follow the policies. Third, the SHAC recommends strengthening the Wi-Fi filters across all campuses to prohibit inappropriate access during the school day. Several different ideas, we tossed around different levels of filters at different grade-level campuses, or perhaps having wireless access be linked to the student's ID number for closer monitoring. Fourth, so that our students can be well-equipped to use electronic devices safely by the time they reach high school, we're recommending implementing a comprehensive technology safety curriculum for grades K through 8. We've spoken with teachers and administrators at various campuses in the district. We believe this could be done during computer time, possibly, for elementary level, and during flex or homeroom for the intermediate and middle school levels without much of a severe impact on the already full teaching day. Technology safety teacs do exist already, but they're more in the health curriculum than the computer curriculum. So it's kind of a bit of a switch, especially for the elementary. So the point here is that many, if not most, of our kids don't understand the real legal trouble that they can get into with their online behaviors. Many are oblivious to online predators, and we can help them gain this knowledge so that they can be good online citizens when they are more ready to do so. Fifth, and finally, so that these principles can be reinforced at home, SHAC recommends offering parent education as well, perhaps in the form of monthly emails or handouts aimed at educating parents in the latest apps and how they're actually being used, as well as holding open forums, possibly, with technology experts so parents can understand the issues surrounding electronic device use and help to keep their children safe. And that's all the strategies. So thank you for your time. And thank you for the, to the members of the SHAC for volunteering your time to work on these important topics, as well as the electronic device use subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I want to thank that committee. That was obviously a lot of work. Quite impressive and a lot of very good suggestions. Thank you. Item J2, consider approval of purchase of security camera system for Welborn Middle School in the amount of $91,483.35 from Design Security Controls, Inc., per EPIC 6 contract. RFP 04.18 using 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We, in the opening of Welborn Middle School, we have the need to do a number of things that we've done this evening, including athletic supplies, athletic training supplies. And we have a security camera system for that school as well. And we had, we are, have for your approval, purchasing through that, through the Region 6 contract for the amount of $91,483.35. With any more information, hopefully to answer any questions, we have Mr. Martindale here. Mr. Martindale, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I think the reason that I wanted to discuss this a little bit more is just to make sure that, in the light of all the safety issues that are going around at different schools around the country, to make sure that you all feel confident that we have a good system and if there's something that needs to be done at this point, that I think this is the time to do it. So I guess that's kind of where I'm very concerned about safety.
Very good. I know that, Mr. Wesson, the number of cameras, this is for 71 cameras on that particular campus, which is comparable or within a handful of what we have at our middle schools. Of course, with all of our, and also with Pecan Trail. Recently, we installed cameras when we opened that facility. So I feel as though if there was a concern with needing more, then we would request more because the board's always been very supportive of the direction that we need to go with any particular needs. So I feel confident we're meeting the needs we need to for security as long the lines of camera installation at Welborn.
I make the motion that we approve this as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven zero. And with that, we are adjourned.